Hey, Robert. Okay, well, it is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. The first point on the agenda is questions, comments from the floor. Are there any?
No.
Thank you. So we'll move right into reports, and if you are ready, Robert, we'll take the student report.
So first off, we had our craft fair on November 18th. It was in the gym and it was packed full of vendors. We had about, I'd say, twenty vendors come up, you know, they all had, you know, anything from candles to wood crafts, a lot of great assortment of different crafts. We had our newspaper come down and take some pictures, attached a few of those pictures, three of them. They took up seven of them, the rest of them on their website. We held our winter concert on the fifth, the seventh, and the twelfth. The attendance was great and the event went flawless, as always. Always a great event. Second issue of our school newspaper was printed on the eighth of December, and a digital copy is right there. So where it says the floor print, you should be able to click and it should pop up, hopefully. And as you're reading that, I'll go over, so our, we started up our sports center, which we had a couple of years back. Ms. Stone recorded that first episode on the eleventh. That'll be out sometime soon as we go through the editing process of that episode. Our heavy lifting team has an interesting meet on January 13th. Three kids will go to the meet, and it's a meet you usually have to end up paying for, but the Gorilla Pack, which is a famous powerlifting team, is actually going to cover the upfront cost for our three kids to compete in that match, so they're gonna end up competing for free.
What is the Gorilla Pack?
The famous powerlifting club, they kind of go around, they do powerlifting competitions. So they're very renowned in that kind of, you know, competition.
Three of them.
A lot of powerlifters, I.
Me neither.
So economy class, taught by Mr. Parker, just recently did a very interesting project. So they had a bunch of other kids come up with a new product or a service to present to the Sharks, who are some of our teachers, you know, some of them, to just name a few, were Ms. Jones, Mr. Horner, Ms. Simmons. And they kind of mimic the episode of Shark Tank. Some of the products were a dress rental company, a solar charging phone case, and a cup that keeps your drinks hot and cold. So right at the right time to show the couple. So the Sharks asked some very tough questions, but all the students were ready. And then finally, we have a Haitian community fundraiser. So Eden Robinson has reached out to me and said she's trying to run this fundraiser for Haitian communities in poverty. So she's planning to hold a five K run in April to benefit these communities. She's also taking non-perishable food items and clothing articles as donations. So if you want to donate anything or have any questions, please do contact her for more information. We'd be more than willing to take anything you have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? I have questions and comments. My comment is I really enjoyed reading floor prints. I think it's really a very ambitious and good thing that we're doing, and I'm hoping that we keep it up. It's a really good endeavor. Two questions I had, one was on the sports center. How do you, how, if I wanted to check it out, how would I do that? Is that gonna be put out there?
So it'll be posted right on our YouTube channel, the Kansas Harry YouTube channel, the school's YouTube channel. There's already, there's old ones on there. I think there's two or three old ones on there from about two years ago. During COVID, right before COVID, I think it was filmed. We started it up again. We just recorded out by the school store, the old school store there. We just recorded there, and that'll be edited now on the eleventh. It'll be right there on the YouTube channel.
Okay, so just go to YouTube and look for Kansas Harry.
And it'll be right there.
Okay. Then the other question I had was in terms of the fundraising for Haiti. How would we contact that person if we want to make a contribution?
I would say the best thing to do would be email her. I think she'd look at it. She emailed me with it. She was very responsive on her email.
How do you get her email?
She's a student.
Just, she's a student here. She's a senior.
Got it. Thank you.
And if you plan on donating anything to her, just I'll let her know too, just check her email, you know.
Okay, it'd be nice to get that out there. If people want to contribute, they have an easy way to do it. Maybe we could even do it through the office or something like that. So thank you. Any other questions, comments? Moving right along, we have the teacher's residency presentation. Take it away, and welcome.
Thank you. So for this year, we are on special assignment. I feel like we should have a little bit.
First, could you just introduce yourselves for the audience?
So Kevin Stowe, elementary physical education, this year on special assignment.
And I'm Celia Vandoorne.
And I'm Brady Bush.
So this year, we've been tasked with going out into the real world as opposed to the academic world to see how employees get along at their jobs, trying to find some connections between what is happening at these businesses, to try then bring them back here to connect to the future of the academies that are currently being built by the administrative team. We're also working within classrooms, trying to help teachers develop some more 21st century learning units, focusing primarily in project-based learning. But right now, we're two days a week where each of us are at different businesses. And then second semester of the year, we're gonna change and go to some different businesses. Right now, I'm at Liberty ARC. I'm working, I worked in their front offices for a couple of weeks, helped out their executive director, get some, take some analog forms that they blasted out to a lot of new employees, make it digital to try and help them kind of move into, you know, move themselves into the 21st century in terms of that. I just recently switched over to one of the day rehab facilities on Church Street, working, developing some fitness activities for their clients down there. And then the rest of the day while I'm there, I'm helping them throughout the day. They do some academic work, help them out with that. We also, you know, make sure, monitor them during the day's activities and just have some social interaction. This is, it's treated mostly like a work day for them, so, like that. But also from the adult and the employee standpoint, you're almost like a teacher for them during the day. Got some emails out there. I'm hoping to get around, they have a bunch of different, bunch of different departments, manufacturing, finance, their business development, their recruiting, human resources. I mean, they're all over the place. They can make connections with almost every single one of the academies that we're developing. So I'm trying to get into some of those other departments, shadow some people there, and hopefully bring some good connections back and develop relationships so students can start getting out there in the next couple of years.
I've been at Rickmar Print and Design Studio in Glover'sville since the beginning of September. I go there two days a week. So my day is different every single time that I go, and it's all based on customer needs. So I start off learning about the design tools, and so I've created a whole bunch of different products for customers. Some of them are very simple, like business cards, or maybe even gotten some of them from like medical offices, like just a reminder, your appointment is coming up, and so I created some of those. Social media posts I've worked on, and flyers, of course. I've also done production, and that's probably the bulk of what I do. Printing, very, very familiar with copier machines, so that was in my wheelhouse. But then I moved on to, you know, scoring, folding using the actual like folder machine. And November was a big month for us in terms of elections and not-for-profits, kind of asking for money. So we did a lot of mailing, we did a lot of mailing. And then I also learned what it's like to own a small business. So I've done purchase orders, billing, customer service, ordering supplies, a ton. It's kind of like opened my eyes of everything that's included in a small business, so it's been wonderful. Yeah.
Okay, questions, comments?
Go ahead.
Oh, boy. Okay, well, the first question I have is, obviously it sounds like you're having a very rich experience. And I know you've been back to school a few times, and I was wondering what that interaction was like and what the reception was like to the things that you learned. And what is it that you learned that you've been able to, you know, to help people introduce to our education?
So obviously, it's a process. I think a lot of people, and I've said it a couple of times, I've said it the most recent fact of the meeting with the high school, and we said during Super Test Day, some of the things that we're seeing are almost like, okay, done. Like, yes, we understand that we see that in our students, like it would make sense that we're gonna see that out in the, out in the real world. Like, one of the examples that we've been giving is, you know, communication between people. So the customer service that Celia's, that Celia's dealing with, and then.
Students just, you know, talking on the phone, calling someone, that was one of the things that my employer, Rickmar, she said was the biggest thing that they've had, like biggest struggle that the kids have had of other interns.
And also the communication piece between a supervisor and subordinate, being able to accept feedback or be able to follow the lead of somebody who is, who is directly responsible for you as an employee.
And we found task initiation, task completion, so we, I, we've seen all these, and they're common in both of our fields of what they're seeing and what they're experiencing. So, yeah, they were definitely something that we brought back to the superintendent conference meeting. Like, these are the things that the people outside of school are noticing, and how can we fix that?
Teachers seem really receptive to try, to want to move in this direction. Change, change, like, again, it's a process, it's gonna take time. We have, I think we are slowly bleeding out. We're getting a lot of teachers to kind of buy into this that are jumping on board and they're asking for our help to help develop these project-based learning units. I've helped out a couple of teachers, make some community connections for stuff that they're doing in their classroom. I've been reaching out to teachers this last week, just trying to develop some stuff for the spring that's gonna be across different classrooms in the high school. I know Celia's doing a bunch down the elementary school.
Yeah, so one of the other things that we do during the week is we do observations. So once a week, I do, I started off in kindergarten, because my wheelhouse is seven through 12. Like, I know adolescents, I know teenagers. A five-year-old, that's kind of like a foreign thing to me, you know? So that probably has been one of the best things that I could have as a teacher, to every week, go see a kindergarten class and follow them throughout the day, first grade, second grade, see the developmental changes, see what they're learning. I mean, the things our kids are learning, it just blows my mind, like what they're capable of. I mean, it's just amazing. Our teachers are amazing. I enjoy my days down there. And then to see the progress that our kids are making, it's great. And then to see them in high school, you know, to think of where they started. But PBLs are definitely something that I think where a lot of teachers are starting to question, and we gave them a whole packet of resources of how to start, if they want to start on their own, and we also made ourselves available to help out. So I think we have a lot of teachers on board who are starting to reach out to us for additional help.
What are some of the things that you really see that would need to change in our, in our school in order to better be prepared, for our kids to be better prepared for the world that's out there, based on your experiences?
I think a lot of the changes that are necessary are going to be held up because of regulations from state, the state ed. To be able to have the flexibility to work within the school day, we have, we have seat time requirements, you have the regency exam requirements. It seems like those things are starting to loosen as years go on. But I think when those go away, when it's, when the decisions are left to locals, so administrators and teachers can work together to move in a direction that's going to be more 21st century based with, of course, your graduate skills, then, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna be kind of like one of the main keys. As of right now, you have teachers that they are thinking outside, they're trying to think outside the box.
Within like the same realm, like doing their curriculum, so that they, you know, students can still be successful.
At the first faculty meeting, I brought up with the middle school and the high school. I said, you know, when we move to 21st century, a lot of times teachers think like, okay, content goes out the window. And like, that's not the case. Like, we still have content that needs to be taught. It's just that we're not gonna spend 180 days, content, 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 test, content, 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 test. It's gonna be a little more fluid, where you might have two days that are more content-based, and then you're gonna have three to seven days now that we're, the students are out there doing the research, taking that content, building from there, their own set of knowledge.
Application.
Yeah, based on the foundation that the teachers have given them, instead of the teachers giving the foundation and then putting in the frame, and then putting like, you know, building the house like on our own. We're putting more onus on the students and giving them more independence and across all of their curriculums, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
How do we, I guess, I feel like I'm missing the piece of, in your example, you're saying we know that students lack telephone skills, customer service kind of skills. So how do we take that knowledge and determine whose curriculum something like that could be fit into and, you know, weave that into working towards in the future?
I think that's gonna be something that, well, on the superintendent conference day, we actually posted like the top 10 21st century skills that our kids need. And we had the teachers go into like their grade level groupings. And we said, out of these 10, what is one thing that you guys can start, like incorporating? What is one thing that your kids really need, and then you guys can start pushing into your curriculum? And they all shared out what it was, and they all chose something different, which was interesting to see, but it also makes sense with the development of their students. So I think if we were to do more of those, or just bringing it back, here are the 21st century skills. Okay, now halfway through the year, what is, what is a skill that your students can work on, and what can we do right now? I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah, to give you kind of like a more, like a concrete example, like with the communication piece, being able to interview other people or be able to present in front of other people. Okay, eye-to-eye, face-to-face, not social media posts or anything like that. I've seen debates in classes where students have to go face-to-face with each other. Horner and Shaw just finished up, well, they're in the process of doing their election cycle in their government class, where the students have to sit up in front and they have to do a debate with amongst the candidates. We have teachers that are looking into do projects where they're calling, potentially calling veterans and interviewing them about their experience being in the circus. So having the teachers there to do those things, to do these projects, but also to make connections somewhere else with other people, and not just, hey, I'm by myself, I'm doing a project, I made, you know, I made a poster or I typed a paper. It's, you're working with a group of other students, so three to four other students. You have to collaborate, you have to communicate with each other. And then also trying to take that next step to connect to the community where they're making phone calls, emails, and contacts, sitting down with other people, face-to-face kind of, how do I ask a question? How do I shake a hand? What's an appropriate dress for those situations? I mean, these are all things that, I mean, students that are graduating, going out, went to college, like, you need to know that just basic, but also, you know, everyday interactions with other people. It's incredibly important to be able just to say, hey, how you doing? You know, you know, how's everything been at a personal level? But then in a professional level to take that, those extra steps and know how to formally address somebody and sit and listen, and then also be able to relay questions back and forth.
Great, thanks.
One thing I'd just like to ask is if you could, that list of 10, 10 things that, you know, 21st century skills, if we could get a copy of those, I would just love to see that, and, you know, just to see what kinds of skills that you're talking about. That would be great to see.
We could probably share our superintendent conference day presentation. And on it was also a list of things that our employers felt like were.
Was that like a PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Well, if we could just maybe get a link to that PowerPoint, I would love to see it, so.
Yeah, PDF slides, PDF slide, get the three or four slides, PDF.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much, and we appreciate you coming to give us this presentation. And we really appreciate that you're getting out into the world and bringing the world back to us.
It's been a great experience, it really has been a great learning experience.
Okay, next thing is the superintendent's update.
First, I'd like to echo what Robert said about the music department, phenomenal three countries. It's left to be said, it always is, but just pretty, not bad a part of being with your kids. And it's just so nice to see every kid with a, with a musical instrument too, without any questions or problems. And we just put in another, we put in another 15 pieces. So really, over the next three years, we should have well over 200 new pieces, plus the stuff that we already have. So every kid should, you know, they should not go without, put it that way.
By the way, I'd just like to share something with everybody, that I was at, at the first concert, which was the younger students. You know, Leo Millman was there with the string players, and playing strings, I don't know. It's one of the harder things to do, because there are no frets, there's no, you know, you have to learn where to put your fingers, and then, you know, it's a process, and it can sometimes be an ugly process. But one of the things that Leo did, which I was just so impressed with, I thought it was so original and creative, he put together a piece where all of the string instruments played open strings while he got on the electric piano and played the tune. And I just thought, what a smart guy this is. I just, I just wanted to share that. I just thought that was so creative, so sorry.
It's phenomenal, it's really is across the board. So next, I'd like to shout out to Emma Payak. If you open up the picture, there's the picture of the billboard that's, that's up, that she created. She won the competition. Looks fantastic, and it's in four locations across Montgomery County. So awesome to get recognized for that, and that was a great job that she did. I'd like to make a recommendation. Robert came to see me last week about bringing in the guest speaker, maybe the second half of the year. And we had $1,500 that we sold the land for. Wonder if we can earmark that, if we could talk to, think we can earmark that money for guest speaker? So it's kind of, you know, it's money that we don't have anyway. I think that we don't have, we can earmark some of that and try to come up with the rest. They've talked about, about a budget. He's gonna search and see what one best fit, we'll bring that. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Let's see, the freezer, remember we talked about the freezer at the elementary school? Earmark 45,000, it came in at 49. So if we could look to approve four more thousand dollars, that takes care of everything. The add, the awning on top, a little bit bigger freezer than we expected. So we should have seven, eight by 10, I think it's a little, 10 by 12 or 10 by 13, so.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve it for a thousand additional dollars for a freezer?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
You bet.
Thank you.
Should have that, should have had that in the spring, and that should alleviate the problems that they need down there for sure, so. And then down the bottom, you're gonna see it, but we're looking to do that meeting with the two boards on January 3rd, as we said. It's gonna be at HFM Bozies. Just wanted to have it at that location. It'll be an open meeting for people if they want to come, and the bottom line is, we're just looking at the possibility for a merger study. And the focus is just on Dave Ziskin coming in, talk about what a merger study would be, how we'd go, go through with that, and if we decide to do that. That's the only step that we're looking to take right now, and then we'll, we'll figure out from there if there's any other step that we'd have to take after that. So step by step, that'd be six o'clock?
So if people want, maybe we could do like a carpool for.
And I'm all set?
Yeah, one of the things that I think we'll have to consider with the, with the merger study, if we decide to go forward with it, is see if we can get some funding for it.
Yeah, we'll be fully funded.
Yeah, we'll be, okay, that's good.
This Connected Gazette, I think, had an editorial on it today.
Yeah.
In addition to the article that you sent.
Yeah, I think it was today's paper had an editorial. And again, you know, it's something, we're just looking at a merger, possibility of a merger study. And then the steps go from there, you know? You may get to the end of the study and realize that's not where you want to go, or realize that maybe we don't take the next step, you know? So it's piece by piece, and then, you know, we take it from there, so.
All right, thank you. Moving on to approvals, I'd like to ask for a motion for a consent agenda from C through S. Make a motion. All in favor? All right. So the first thing, which I excluded from that, is the minutes, because I'm on here, so. Any questions, comments on the minutes? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve. All in favor? Thank you.
Any abstentions from minutes?
Oh, and I abstained, sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, you're such a detailed question. Okay, Bill, any questions there, other than mine?
No, go for it.
Okay. So I have a bunch, what, 64332, and also 64392, surveillance.
Those are the bus cameras on the buses.
Oh, okay. I was just curious, what's, what's surveillance? 64347, fiscal advisors and marketing.
Yeah, that's our, our fiscal company that looks over, like, if we're gonna have a capital project, looks over the financing for that.
So they just help put together the financial package?
They do some like SEC filings for us.
That's, that's service.
Moving right along, 64351, it's only $157, but it said, "Learning without tears." I said, well, that's nice. What is it?
It's just an elementary supply company, yeah.
It's a what?
The elementary school uses them for supplies.
What, what is it?
Specifically, I know there's "learning without tears" for handwriting, so it could be related to handwriting.
Okay.
But I'd have to look back at that.
Can you certify that people don't cry when they?
No, nobody cries.
Okay, thank you. 64359, Marar LLC, $3,000.
Yeah, that was actually a company that we wanted to make the checkout to, and we did a tax refund, one of the school tax payments.
And then finally, check number 4284, CDW Government. What is that again?
That was, that's the classroom furniture. We use it for a lot of the class, the big classroom furniture purchases. We also use them for a lot of laptops and for the teachers.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Anyone else? Sorry, I'm always taking up space for that. Okay, oh God, now we're moving on to the treasurer's report.
No problem with that.
Any questions, comments there? I'll just, I'll let it go today.
No, go for it.
What?
You got questions?
That's interesting. All right. My, my big question is, there is, one of the money market funds we have had 2.2 million in it, and we got $25,000 of interest, which I was through to see, because that's helpful and meaningful. But then we have a second money market account with 7.3 million that got $12,000. So it had three times the money and half the interest, and how could that be?
The New York class accounts make a lot more interest, so I moved all the money over from MDT into the New York class.
So the 2 million is at them, and can we move the 7 million there too, when this is, when it's up?
Right now, the majority is in the New York class.
Okay, so we should be doing better.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That just.
They have really, really good rates right now.
So that just kind of blew my mind, it really did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the MDT rates aren't as good as the New York class. They're specifically designed for schools and towns, so they get a lot more interest.
Okay, so that's it. We can move on to reserve plan. Any questions, comments there?
Is there any reserve plan detail that needs reserved?
I just, again, just had one question about the equipment reserve. There was a line there that said you might need to do another equipment reserve. Could you talk what that's about?
Yeah, that's what we would like to do during the next budget vote, is set another equipment reserve. Because the other one we have right now is fully funded.
You know, when it says 500,000, it means once you hit 500,000, you keep balance of 500,000. So once we hit that 500, then you have to do another one.
Okay, so we'll.
You wish it was yesterday, as long as you don't go over 500,000, right? But as long as you hit it, you gotta do another one, so.
Oh, so that one will be basically gone, and then we have to ask for a new one.
Yeah, it's fully funded. It's not like, we haven't spent it all, but we've funded it all.
Right.
So now we can set up another one and fund that as in the future.
Even though there's money still in the other one, you can't put it in.
Okay. All right, I just didn't quite understand what that process was, so thank you.
Same as the building project on this.
Okay, school tax collectors' report, anything there? Again, I have a question. I'm sorry, but I, I couldn't figure out what the tax rate is about. I tried all different computations and permutations to see, to use that tax rate, and it never came out with the right figures.
It's not going to, because of the eight different towns and their assessment rates and their equalization.
It's not going to, because of the eight different towns and their assessment rates and their equalization rates and all that. It's not, it's never gonna come out.
So, like, when you see that, it's like, you know, we had three million dollars in Canada-Haring, and it was sixteen. And what is that sixteen? It's not sixteen percent, it's not one point six percent, it's not point one six percent. What, what is the tax rate about?
It, you really have to go over, like, the true tax, the true value tax rate with all of it, and that's like about sixteen, I believe, I think that's what we're gonna do. And it's different for each town. They have a big, there's like seven spreadsheets, they're going through the calculations.
It's just the tax rate.
Cause it's just, it's just very frustrating, you know? We get these reports that are supposed to kind of enlighten you, and instead it's just like, whoa.
I know.
Okay, thank you again. Alright, moving right along, Scarey County Tax Recapitulations, anything there? Okay, Post-Community Agreement for the pilot, um, this was a very long report, an agreement. And if you could summarize it, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's the same agreement, just with a few small word changes in it. So, the terms are the same, the dates are the same. They just wanted to shore up some terms, because they just redid it with the IDA, which is the all, uh, everyone at once. They just wanted a, a few more detailed words in it. So, nothing changes conceptually on it, so...
Um, did it change in terms of when we're gonna see the money?
No.
So, we're still gonna get the money that we gave them for the progress?
As long as the project goes through, they'll know that by March.
Okay.
They're still full force ahead, so I think that they were gonna can it, they would've can it by now. But March is their drop-in date, you'll know.
Okay. So, write that down, and then I'll ask them. Okay, uh, moving on to, um, Benetec. Can you summarize that one as well, that was another lengthy?
Yeah, this is a contract that we, we use Benetec, um, to manage the Affordable Care Act. And you know how you get those forms when you do your taxes, the ten ninety-five forms? That you're supposed to get to prove that you have health insurance through the whole year. That's what they do. They track it for us, they send the forms to everybody, um, and you need a company to do it, cause it's a mandate.
And they've done well, I mean, they're, we're satisfied with what you're...
There's nothing we can do about it unless we have someone in-house to do it, so...
Ten thousand, honestly?
Yeah, it's, basically keeps track of if there's ever anyone that you have to offer health insurance to, cause they work too much, too, like, too many hours, this has never happened for, like, a substitute. Um, but it's just one of those IRS mandates that we have to do, so...
And then it just refuses, right?
Yeah, they do it for other schools.
Okay, um, and so now we will move on to, uh, real estate sale?
Yeah, that's a portion of the land, purchase.
And that will be hopefully used to pay for a speaker?
Help pay for the speaker.
Alright, okay, and then we have, um, a bunch of policies, um, seventy-six eleven. Uh, that one, as I recall, was just eliminating that policy.
Right, it's already built into another policy. It was only a couple lines, but it's built into a new policy.
Then, uh, we have, uh, number thirty-four twenty-one, non-discrimination, equal opportunity. Any questions on that one? And also, especially people who are on the policy committee, if you have any comments or, or, you know, questions, concerns, please take the floor. Okay, then we have the employee religious expression. Uh, this is a new one, I think, that came out of NISBA, um, based on what happened in that football game. You know, it really raised the issue, and certainly nationally, people saw the need to really spell out...
Yeah, we went over all of these right before, and now we're just gonna...
Yeah, yeah, any questions coming up, yeah.
Um, graduation ceremonies, anything there?
I heard most of these were, you know, as we're shifting from Erie to NISBA. Anything that's brand new, we should just go and overwrite our old ones, cause they're already included where we add. So, now we're on line with NISBA when they make a change later on, as opposed to having it with Erie, a little bit of NISBA. Just, you know, if we got a, a policy from two thousand and eleven, it's kind of foolish to not just redo it to what NISBA recommends, so...
Okay, um, school, uh, fifty, eighty-three fifty-one, school ceremonies, uh, observances. And also the next one, student religious expression, um, those are all, again, in reaction to the, uh, the whole football experience that made national news. Um, program for students with disabilities, anything there? And sexual harassment in the workplace. And finally, alcohol and drug testing of drivers. Okay, so we're good with all of those? Alright, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, okay. Motion, uh, second?
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. And now we will go on to personnel. Again, I would ask for a motion for a consent agenda on personnel.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, thank you. Okay, so first one is termination?
Yes, uh, moving forward, uh, I hope she's fine at surgery. But I think it's more extensive than anticipated, so for her recovery. Plus, if she's able to continue working in the field, for sure, well, in terms of her recovery, for sure.
So, this is the letter that would come out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, she should receive the letter.
She already knows?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was to, October twenty-eighth, no, uh, October twenty.
Okay, any questions on that? Alrighty, uh, we'll move on to resignation. And that is Preston Neep.
Yeah, what happened when he took the other job, there was a window open a couple days or something, right?
Yeah, he has to resign from his previous position to accept the new position. So, now that he's been appointed, he needs to resign for the whole, so we can appoint somebody?
Um, temporary building maintenance worker?
That's his position.
That, Matthew Murphy?
Twenty-plus years, uh, as a facilities manager, and has, uh, wanted a lesser job in terms of being a homeowner. And, uh, so we've got somebody who's, has just amazingly vast experience, so we're kind of lucky, so... Keep saying we're lucky, but we are, we just can't get some really good, uh, yeah, it's really good, uh, person, so...
And then we have a leave request from Carrie Powers?
Just recently had her baby.
Boy or girl?
A little earlier.
Girl.
Okay.
Earlier than anticipated, right?
Yeah.
And everything's, everything's good?
Yeah. Krista Giariso is in for her...
Yeah.
And then, uh, E, we have another leave request from Justice Parker.
Another earlier one, anticipated to go in January, but, uh, it's came a little early.
Okay, uh, Bosie Sublist, any questions on that? Okay, moving along, point of substitute cleaner, which is Joseph Slater?
Yep, I'm coming.
And a point, Odyssey of the Mind volunteers who have a much greater mental capacity than I. Any questions there?
No.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda on personnel.
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you. Okay, all business, uh, is presentation topics. The floor is open for suggestions. Um, we generally, we're really looking at March, April, and May at this point.
Yep.
Um, so, this, uh, so, uh, we can come up with three that we all agree on, and we can move forward with that. So, floor is open for any suggestions that people might have.
I would like to see kindergarten through second grade come in and talk to us about what they're doing. Cause I know we've talked about what they've done, you know, and, and, you know, taking into the, um, different academics and that every teacher's, um, more specialized, and how it's going. You do the same for three, two, five, just kind of like where we can talk to them.
So, you want K two and three, five?
Yeah, so K through two and then three through five.
Okay.
Two different times?
Two different, okay.
Oh, they could come in the same day, but, you know, just two different presentations.
Yeah, so just currently what they're doing in their, in their area?
Yeah, I mean, we just, we just heard that, you know, things that are going really well, I'd like to know, what is that that's going really well?
Right.
Yeah.
Sounds good. What else?
Anything else?
I've got it all down, but I can't find it. You already put your list in, right?
What department? I thought we haven't, I don't think we've heard of this, uh, likes.
Athletes.
What about athletic?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't know, they should tell us, right?
Update on, uh, teams, numbers, uh, mergers?
Yeah, I guess, I guess since we can't answer that question, I would really need to have them come in. You know, like, what are they doing, what are their goals, but, you know, what are the challenges?
Sounds good.
I had, I had a couple, just took me a while to access them, but I would love to have a kindergarten presentation. I don't remember when we've had one, and I was curious how they were affected by COVID. Foundationally, how they're coming to us, maybe...
We want to come up with the K two, so she can, right?
Yeah.
So, more...
I mean, it takes yours.
So, more, say it again, what you were saying, just in terms of...
Oh, I was curious, you know, uh, how they were affected by COVID. A lot of them probably didn't do, you know, Happy Clown and some of the things that they traditionally had. I wonder how they came to us without some of those foundational things? Wondered how the numbers were, um...
Numbers of students?
Number of students and just how it was going. I haven't heard from them in a while, and I thought that might help pick you back up to K two. I mean, we lost a lot of our veteran teachers in that area, and I just thought it might be nice to see where they're at.
See the, see the teachers, new teachers, don't even know all of them, you know? Are there any nursery schools left?
There's pre-K three, pre, we have pre-K three and pre-K four. But no more Little Friends or Happy Clown or anything, I wonder how that affects kids.
Happy Clown's not even in business anymore, I bet.
Right, Little Friends, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just use that as, yeah.
True.
Me either.
Okay, you said you had some, another one?
Oh, I had about, uh, anything to do with the merger, but, uh, we've already addressed that, but, I mean, we'll probably be doing that as we go. We'll be doing that anyway, imagine.
So, we'll talk about, uh, January third, what the merger study is. And then when the merger study's over, we'll have extensive dialogue on what the merger study produced, and what if we wanna go next step?
Yep.
So, I think it'll be progression.
Yep.
And Dave Ziskin will present what a merger study really is, and what, and what it entails, and how long it takes, and we'll be doing it. What would be the steps if you agreed to do it after that? I liked about State Ed coming in, but we don't need State Ed right now. All we wanna do is focus on the merger study, if we're even gonna do it, and don't put the carpet under ours, so... I think slow methodical is much better than just trying to get it.
Things can get out of control.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I, I would really, uh, I, I'd like to see a presentation on empowering students, which they, in the presentation began to talk about, but I'd really like to see an exploration of that, and a discussion about that. What, what we're doing, what we can be doing, what we should be doing.
Empowering them to do what? What would you want them to do?
Empowering them to have more, you know, a, uh, an accurate role in, in, in just designing their education, in modifying their education, in giving feedback about their education.
But that's what the academies were kind of about, giving them, you're empowering them to make better choices, you know? So, that's what I was just wondering.
Yeah. That, and along with some of the committees that we have, you know, we have the school approval committee.
Oh, I know government was, it was the principal's cabinet, those kids that come in. Do you still have that?
No.
Oh, okay.
We have Robert's by the cabinet. You know, meet with random kids about different things, but, yeah.
Okay, just wondering, sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's a principal's breadbox.
Robert has a brainstorm.
I, I would like to see principals talk about it, I'd like to hear some student input on that, and, you know, just to see about, you know, do students feel empowered at this point? Or they feel more empowered, less empowered? What, you know, how are we handling that question about getting students more invested in, in their education?
I like the academies thing, it's just that it hasn't gotten really off the ground quick yet, um, to be able to ask them if anything is a quick change. I'm sure they're gonna come up with the same answer to that, they kind of were already, cause they don't feel very empowered just yet, until you get them, so they can start thinking about getting into those academies, right? We're not doing that yet, right?
The stuff going into next year is going on, so the academies aren't started until next year. But the eighth grade presentations have happened, the eighth grade tests have happened. They've met and done classroom activities about it, the job fair is next month. So, all of the pre-academy stuff is happening, and then next year we'll actually start scheduling with the academies.
So, the eighth graders coming in, we just start that?
Yes.
And you're not talking about the tenth, eleventh, and top?
Correct, yeah.
Well, I, again, I, I was just thinking about exploring that through, mostly middle school and high school, although somewhere in elementary school as well. But just, you know, how our student voice is being encouraged and considered and, um, you know, and, and listened to. Um, and what can we do to, to further that, um, expression? It's just something that I've been interested in, and just...
Yeah.
We'll see. Um, anymore?
I had a third one, but Nick kind of addressed it in an email, so I don't know, we needed to get it to that. Well, those give us our three, right?
Yep.
Uh, we go K two, three, five, with the K piece, we go athletics, and we go empowered. That makes sense?
Yeah, cause I, I just would like to say, I mean, one of the reasons that I, I've come back to this is there was a lot of, of sessions at the NISBA conference that I went to about that whole question. And where students were talking about, you know, what they, what they've done, and the effect that it's had on their, their school and their community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it's, it's tied into things like, um, our civic engagement, for example, and, you know, and, uh, students getting involved in issues at school, and helping to resolve them and solve them. Um, and, you know, I just, um, I think it's something that would be worth talking about and, and thinking about.
So, we'll go March, K two, three, five, we'll go April athletics, and we'll go main course.
Okay. Alright, is that good with everyone?
Sounds good.
Okay, so, moving right along, we have, uh, new business, NISBA conferences. There are two NISBA conferences, uh, coming up, I just wanted to give it an early warning system to it. Um, the first is on February second, uh, there's gonna be their virtual capital conference by NISBA, which will be from eight-thirty in the morning till twelve forty-five. If you register, you can do it on your computer, you know, it's a virtual conference. And what they're gonna be doing at that conference is talking about proposed legislative and spending priorities, and a review of the executive budget, and a discussion with legislators and state policymakers about those issues, and about educational issues in general. Uh, my family's to be, you know, pretty engaging and helpful, so I would encourage everyone to, you know, go to the NISBA site, and if you, if you can, you know, during a day like that, um, and register and participate. Um, the second is then on, uh, February seventh, there'll be an in-person lobbying day in Albany, um, from eight AM to four PM. And it's, it's, you know, we stopped doing that during COVID, but it's back.
What day is that, Mark, uh, February seventh? I'm just curious.
It's, uh, it's a day of the week.
What day is it, February seventh?
It's a Friday. It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay, it's a Wednesday. Um, and they'll have information and talking points for people who are participating. And I've been there before, they have kind of a, uh, an educational session in the morning, and they give you breakfast. And then, uh, they ask that you try to set up meetings with your state assemblyman, um, who for us is Robert Smolyn, and your state senator, who is Neil Breslin. And, um, again, I, the last, last time I participated, actually, they did have it last year, I take that back. It was before that, it was canceled. And, uh, I was actually very much encouraged, and I had a very, um, good, and I, Neil Breslin, I, I expected to have a good session with, but I had a really good session with, uh, Smolyn, which also, you know, we, we have it. I actually just, um, had like twenty minutes or half hour, just a discussion with him about our priorities and our needs and our interests, and I, I was very, you know, I felt like it was meaningful. I don't know if I changed his mind about anything, but I thought it was a great, uh, dialogue. So, I would encourage people, again, to register for that. If anyone else besides me is gonna be going, you know, let me know, cause we can go together, you know? So I would encourage people again to register for that, if anyone else besides me is gonna be going, you know, let me know, cuz we can go together, you know, consistently.
Are you going to vote?
What?
Are you going to attend votes?
Yes.
We have to really talk about foundation, it's over, and it's fully funded, right now we're just maybe at zero, so.
Well, I assume that would be one of the issues that we're raising, I hope.
They just can't go out with zeros, you know, they just can't, so.
But anyhow, I would encourage people to go, and it's really nice to interact with other school board members at the lobbying day as well, and I always find interesting, and we use that, so, just wanted to put that out there as, as, you know, hold a date.
Yep.
And again, both of them, you need to register ahead of time, so if you can do either, you know, please do. Okay, then let's see what else we got here, merger study meeting, we already talked about that, so we'll all try to, I guess we should meet, meet here like maybe five fifteen? So do you want, anyone who doesn't, who would like to carpool, let's plan to meet, you know, in the conference room or something at five fifteen, and then we'll, whoever's there, we can drive up together. Okay?
Yep.
Do we have anything?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session.
Thank you, all in favor?
Thank you.
I just wanted to.
Okay, guys, thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention that.